Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, and we are at 7:34 PM. Brian, can we please have roll call?
Mr. Grippo.
Present.
Dr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. Inosensio.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Maris.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Siobhan. And Missing.
Here.
You have a call.
And just for the record, Mr. Siobhan will not be here. He had informed earlier that he is out of state for Eid celebrations. And while you're at it, Brian, can you read the Open Public Meetings Act, please?
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to The Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, The Star-Ledger, The Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. And Ms. Maris, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
(Inaudible) United States of America and in two republics which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Moved by Nancy.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Grippo. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sure we don't have a student representative tonight, so let's move on to the most special part of the agenda, which is the recognition of our service professionals and support staff. Off to you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. So tonight, we're here to salute our retirees first and then to thank the representatives from our school-connected organizations for their support during this year. The quality of a person's life is a direct proportion to their commitment to excellence, regardless of their chosen field of endeavor. So we salute and thank the following individuals who have shared their commitment to excellence and abortion of their lives with the students of Franklin Township Public Schools. I'd like to invite our manager of Human Resources, Colleen Delaney, to come. Devlin, sorry. So many names to remember today. For those of you who don't know her, this is the new manager of Human Resources.
Thank you. First, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank all of our retirees for their service to the district. Your hard work, dedication, and positive spirit has truly made a significant impact on the students and staff of Franklin Township Public School District. Once a warrior, always a warrior. Thank you.
I'm sorry. If you're here when your name is called, please come up and you can greet the board, shake everybody's hand, and then see Mr. Banano. You guys remember him. And he'll give you your plaque.
Emily Aman, Science Specialist. Jennifer Bellamy, Paraprofessional. Lisa Belizio, Special Education Teacher. John Bionde, Elementary Math Teacher. Maria Black, Spanish Teacher. Samuel Bove Gonzalez, JR OTC Instructor. Matthew Fuhr, Art Teacher. Albert Fico, Principal. Nancy Fisher, Kindergarten Teacher. Cheryl Frederick, Science Teacher. Marie Garnado Dahl, Preschool Teacher. Deborah Green. That's okay. Paraprofessional. Susan Lizinski, Elementary Teacher. I probably said it wrong. Okay. Lisa Marquette, School Psychologist. Libby Marks, Elementary Teacher. Thomas McLaughlin, Paraprofessional. Randy Neer, Preschool Teacher. Steven Steven Neely, Elementary Teacher. Julie Ochoa, Supervisor of ESL and Bilingual Education. Michael Pinax, TV Production. Heda Popal, Music Teacher. Sherri Richardson, Social Studies Teacher. Richard Rikowski, Computer Technical. Darcy Saven, Academic Coach. And a special welcome to Jaclyn Schneider. Thank you. Karen Smith, Duty Aid Food Services. Patty Toma, Food Service Worker. Karen Smith, Duty Aid. Patty Toma, Food Service Worker. Barbara Trey, Language Arts Teacher. Darlene Verona, Nurse Secretary. Jaclyn Vasquez, JR OTC Instructor. Louise Velez, Paraprofessional. Douglas Walton, Paraprofessional. Lorraine Wells, Special Education Teacher. Lorraine Westover, Paraprofessional. Irish Wilkins, Supervisor of Elementary MAB, AIS Co-Coordinator Richmond. And last but not least, Greeley Wyndham Jr., Safety Officer.
And if everyone would like to come back up very quickly and take a group picture with the board, that would be terrific. Dr. Loggins is going to take the photo for me. That is a nice picture. Take that. Thank you, everyone. And remember, retirement may be an ending, a closing, but it is also a new beginning. So to all of our retirees, thank you. May your new beginning bring you all you could wish for and more.
Folks, before we get to the next group, I just wanted to take an opportunity, if I may, just to say thank you to everyone. Thank you for your years of service. Thank you for your support. I know the board appreciates all the hard work, and we appreciate you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Best of luck on your future endeavors. And if we can ever be of support for you as you move forward, please don't hesitate to call on us. So thank you.
Okay. Next up, I'd like to thank, on behalf of the Superintendent and the Board of Education, the presidents and representatives of our other school support organizations for your dedication, hard work, and support for the staff and students of Franklin Township Public Schools this past school year. So I'm going to ask if there is anyone here from the Franklin High School PTO, PTSO, if you could come up, say your name and your position, and then you two can shake the board's hand. And I'll have certificates sent to you through Mr. Demaglio.
Thanks, Mary. At the end. Okay. Thank you for the cake. I appreciate that very much. I'm Wendy Riga. I'm the co-president at the Franklin High School.
I'm Deb Perillo. I am Wendy's co-president at the Franklin High School.
And if anyone is here from the PTSO of Franklin Middle School, either the Hamilton Street or the SGS campus, please come up, introduce yourself to the group, and shake the board's hand.
Good evening. My name is Ina Sade, and I am co-president at the Hamilton Street Campus Middle School.
I'm Jo Thierwindakshen. I'm the Vice President of Franklin Middle School at SGS. Appreciate this nice gesture that this group has thrown to.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from the PTO of Clermont Elementary School? Connerly Road School? Elizabeth Avenue School?
Hi, everyone. My name is Malai Poong, and I'm co-president at Elizabeth Avenue. My co-president couldn't be here. Her name is Heather Warholman.
Anyone here from the PTO of Franklin Park School? Hillcrest School? McAfee Road School?
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm Shannon Goff, co-president of McAfee Road School.
Hello, everyone. Leslie Davis Primo, co-president.
Is there anyone here from the PTO of Pine Grove Manor School? Is there anyone here from the Franklin Athletics Booster Club? Franklin High School Band Parents?
Hi, I'm Maritza Moslevi Ellis, and I'm the co-president of the Franklin High School Marching Band Band Parents Association.
Is there anyone here from the Franklin Orchestra Parents? Franklin High School Vocal Music Parents Organization?
Hi, I'm Nikki Tatum. Thank you.
Project Graduation and the Parent Organization Presidents Council.
I'm Nick Demaglio. I thought this was all over last year, but apparently not. I'm still here. Any of you retirees that want to be like Bill Grippo and come back after your service, there's a position open. Join us.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now, if those present from the PTO or other school support organizations would come back up and take a picture with the board, I would appreciate it. There is, for the administrators that have retired, there's a special board resolution for you guys. So before you leave, if I could just ask you to sit one more time?
Missing, are you going to read it? Yeah. Yeah. We're going to read one. Yep.
Okay. Are we ready? Recognition of Service of Professional and Support Staff. We just did that. I'm just running through the agenda quickly. Okay. Here we are. Whereas the Franklin Township Board of Education wishes to express its appreciation and gratitude for two retiring employees for their many years of dedicated service in the school district. Therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin Township Board of Education formally recognizes these retiring employees. Whereas, a supporter of Franklin Township School District have served as their positions at their schools and during their period of leadership. They have demonstrated high standards of leaderships as administrators, as school employees. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools of the township of Franklin, Somerset County, New Jersey, do hereby take the opportunity to express their deep gratitude and affirmation to all our retiring staff, a true warrior for life, for their excellence, dedicated service, and leadership to the Franklin Township Board of Education, School District, and Community. Can I get a motion to move this? Moved by Nancy, seconded by Dr. Hopkins. All in favor? Motion carries.
Now you can go. And get some cake on the way. If you're going to go make a run for it, because we're going to start a presentation in about a minute.
Okay. We're on to the next part of the agenda where we're going to have a public hearing on the Student Safety Data Report, including Internet Safety, by Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. So it's my honor to present the Student Safety Data Presentation and Public Hearing for the Period One portion of this school year. Period One is that period of time between September, start of school, and December 31st. The SSDS report is part, this is the first part of the state's report on student discipline in all public schools. So we're looking, we use this as an opportunity not just to focus on suspension, but all discipline, and to give you some insight into how we use the discipline data and, you know, how we use that to help make our schools very safe. Okay? So our district-wide goal is to increase academic achievement, meet the social and emotional needs of all of our students through using current and expanded programs such as PBIS, Restored in Practice, and a number of other programs that are designed to identify students who have particular needs, especially as it relates to behavior, and focuses on how we can change those behaviors to acceptable standards. And to provide students and staff with a safe environment in which to teach and learn. In looking at the grand picture, the overall picture of discipline in our district for that period of time, from September to January, it looks like the three pies that you see on the screen. Okay? The elementary first, middle school, and the high school. The pie, the total pie, represents the total populations of those schools. So at the elementary level, there were 3,584 students. 3,508 of them got no discipline referrals. They weren't sent to the office. That doesn't mean that they were perfect individuals, but what it does mean is that they responded to universal behavior practices. So the slice in the pie that you see, and that slice is blue and red, represents students who received at least one discipline referral. The blue portion of that pie are students who were not suspended as a result of that, and the red portion of that represents students who received at least one suspension. I think this is significant, the C, that helps show that in general, students in our schools are meeting the behavioral expectations that help enhance their academic achievement. All right? At the middle school, you can see, and I want to just point this out because those of you who may have remembered this same pie from last year, you may have noticed that the slice is about the same size, but that there were certainly more students who had resolved, as a result of their ODR, had received at least one suspension. This year, it is, you know, we've been working on that. It's still a work in progress, as you will see, but it is something that we are focused on to improve overall behavior and academic performance. And at the high school. 2,220 students, 2,048 of them had no discipline referrals. None. And as you will see, the high school has made some significant gains in addressing student behavior, building positive relationships, helping students to make better decisions. Looking at what those discipline ODR referrals look like, this is what, comparing them to the same period of time last, in the 2022 school year. So as you can see, significant difference at the high school. Almost half. The middle school, as I mentioned, is a challenge, and was a challenge during the first half of this school year. I think what this information did for our middle school principals and administrators and our staff was to begin to focus on what we needed to do specifically to address those behaviors. I think, and we haven't collected all of the data for the second half of the year, but I think you're going to notice some significant improvement as based on that information. And lastly, the elementary schools, again, you know, a decrease, but, and that number is small when you consider the total number of elementary school students in our district. All right? We like to compare what the top five are. And this is of particular interest to our administrators because this is what they work on. So if you look at the elementary school, physical aggression was the top. It still is, but there's a less. Disruption is the second. And noncompliance, obscene materials and language, and then misuse of electronics. Last year, this year, that wasn't on the top five, but unsafe materials. And people like ask that question. Well, typically, what is unsafe objects? Typically, that is student has a pocket knife in their bookbag or something. So typically, that's how it's classified. They don't, if the blade is less than three inches, it's not really considered a weapon. So, but I want to, but we do consider it an unsafe object. All right? At our middle schools, physical aggression topped out our list, and that was of concern for all of us. Disruption hit the second. Noncompliance, obscene, inappropriate language and materials. And then lastly, misuse of electronics. In comparison, the numbers are slightly higher in some categories and lower in others, but, you know, this was an area of particular concern and focus for our administrators. And we're continuing to do work in these areas. At the high school, I like to point out that top category, cutting class, it is still the top category across the board. But, and for almost ever, the numbers have been dramatically high. However, if we notice that as we compare last year to this year, dramatic, dramatic decrease. And we attribute that to some of the PBIS strategies and types of recognition activities that are designed to enhance and promote and encourage students to want to be in class rather than to be in those hallways and doing other kinds of things. All right? I need to mention, too, thank you, that physical aggression while this period, time in 2022 school year and 2023, is also down significantly. So again, the efforts of the high school, their administration, and their staff are paying off. And, you know, I'd like to point that out because, you know... And, you know, I like to point that out because, you know, you don't always see the impact of our PBIS frameworks that district focuses on to change attitude, culture, and behavior. But the work is still work, and our, our building administrators and our teachers are really doing a yeoman's job in, in, in trying to change that culture. All right? So, and now I mentioned some of those things that we're doing to support students, you know, mentoring groups, partnering with community agencies like the municipal alliance, using the youth center, the mentoring programs such as the YOGE program. At the high school, Cooking with Cops is a partnership with Franklin Township Police Department, Boys and Girls Circle, check-in and checkout using restorative practices. Not only do we focus on the negative behavior, the punishment side of it, but the restorative practices and the techniques that our administrators and teachers are using in this area help students to begin to take ownership and accountability for their behavior and to understand that those behaviors cause hurt and harm to others. And then not only that, but also there's a portion in that restorative practice that says, well, how do we make that right? How do we change that? So it's very reflective. Certainly, our Saks focuses on vaping, our partnership with New Jersey 4S, which, and our counseling and SEL services. Although this was not made available during the first half of the school year and is only really being launched now, I thought I would mention this new app that is available for our students, for our staff, and for our families. This is a, an app that is free to our community through a partnership with the New Jersey Department of Education and the Camden County Ed Services Commission. The Help Me app is something, and I think the information was, is available on our website, and also there was information sent home to parents, and students began receiving information today because we want to make this available to them to use during the summer and will continue to use it during the school year. And what it does, it provides additional support for students and families who might have social, emotional kinds of concerns and problems, who might have problems with food, housing, shelter, bullying, any number of different kinds of things that they can press and get an immediate connection to resources to help them address those issues. All right? Speaking of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, this is what it looks like for us for the 2022 school year and comparing that to this present school year. Interestingly enough, the number of investigations increased. What that tells us is that students and families are comfortable with reporting incidents that they believe are harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And when you look at the number of incidents that were actually confirmed, so you look at 72, that's a lot of students who felt that there was something, you know, that they may have been bullied, and a lot of investigations. But 18 of those district-wide ended up being confirmed. I would like to just point out and give a shout out to our anti-bullying specialists at all of their, our schools because they are very adept at doing those investigations and, and making sure that they're comparing the behaviors to the criteria that the state puts out to help identify bullying behavior. Let me point out too, while I'm here, because there's the misconception that when we do these HIB investigations, that we are identifying bullies. That's not really the case. What we're looking at is bullying behavior. And our goal is to change that behavior, all right? Not label students, all right? So what is harassment, intimidation, and bullying? Okay? The states identify specific characteristics that our anti-bullying specialists use daily. And there are two characteristics that have to be met in order for something to satisfy the state's requirements for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The first is it has to be motivated by an actual or perceived distinguishing characteristic. And the second is that it also has to take place on school grounds, at a school bus, on, on the school bus, at a school function. And it, and it could be things that happen off school grounds, but if it does, it has to seriously impact and disrupt the orderly operations of the school. So those are two major distinguished characteristics that must be met in order for behavior to be, to fall into that bullying category. And it can at least have at least one of these three incidents, three characters to trigger. The possibility of physical or emotional harm to the victim or the victim's property, or the effect of insulting or demeaning the victim. And if it meets either one of those, it also probably creates a hostile educational environment. Testing, okay. All right. So consequences. For instances where a student has been determined to have violated the district's HIB policy, on the first and second offense, they meet consequences aligned with the student code of conduct. And any and all harassment, intimidation violations become part of a disciplinary record. For a third violation and anyone, any violations after the third, the student is, you know, this becomes part of their, again, disciplinary record, and the student with the assistance of the parent have to participate in an online course that teaches, again, the impact of bullying and the, helps promote non-bullying behavior. All right? So what to do if you are, feel that your, your child is a bully, or if you are a student and a bully, or if you have a friend that is bullied, the thing to do is to report it. Report it to those individuals in your school that can do something about it. I'd like to, to, to encourage our families and our students to not wait to, if you see something and you think it needs to be investigated, report it immediately while the information and the data associated with it is fresh in the minds of bystanders or, you know, people witnessing it and so on and so forth. Okay? So one of the things, and I don't know that I will go through each of these tonight, but this is something that I, we believe is very helpful to our community in understanding harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We put together a series of about 10 questions that, that are commonly asked when related to incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. You know, what is it? We just went over. What are the requirements for addressing harassment, intimidation, and bullying off campus? Do parents have the right to deny staff permission to interview a child as part of the HIB investigation? All of these are things that have come up, and we hope that by making these available to people, that it would help you to develop a clear understanding of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. That, that list, by the way, will be available on school websites. Our anti-bullying specialists in schools will be sharing it. It will also be in our student, our revised student code of conduct. All right? And moving into internet safety. The Children's Internet Safety Protection Act requires school districts to provide education and safety and some level of monitoring for all students who use our internet or internet. So it teaches internet protocol. In our district, we protect students' use of electronic communications by assigning student email accounts, which are processed through the district server. That has a filter that blocks inappropriate materials from our school-based computers. And we use a monitoring system called LineWise that alerts us when students are attempting to access inappropriate sites, when they're doing things that are researching things or discussing harmful or self-harming activities. So, and we, you know, we say here that we typically try to address that the following day, but we have a tiered system. So incidents that are, like, for example, suicide ideation, we would be addressing them immediately. And we are notified immediately of those, that top level of concern. Students in grades three through 12 are provided education in their classes through assemblies on cyberbullying and the like. And lastly, in our code of conduct, we do outline all of the protocols associated with protecting students and students' use of internet and social media sites. Lastly, school districts in New Jersey are required to provide safety drills. We typically do them, we typically have two drills a month, a fire drill and some type of an emergency drill. Those of you who are sitting in the audience who have children probably get those announcements because we share with, them with you when we conduct them so that you know that those drills are taking place. And I wanna say that those drills are, we don't use simulations, so there's no sounds, there's no, you know, fake casualties or any of those kinds of things. Our purpose is to educate students on what to do if there should be an emergency. And, you know, the types of drills are non-fire drills, bomb threat drills, active shooter drills that don't have sounds or sights for students to see, lockdown drills, and shelter drills. All right? And this brings me to that point of questions.
I'll start from the side. Dr. Hopkins, any questions?
It seems like that we are leaving the COVID era behind us, and it seems like our disciplinary problems is starting to decrease and the, the students are really starting to reengage with each other in a positive way. There we go. More so of a statement than a question.
Sure, thank you. Walter?
No questions, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Nancy? Nothing. Erica?
No question, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Jimmy?
Mr. Wilson, with the numbers that we're seeing in the middle school, are we adding more resources to the middle schools to be able to deal with some of the issues that we're seeing? Which I'm assuming most of them are social, social probably than anything else, especially with the contribution of the cell phones.
Testing, there we go. All right. A great, great question. What we are looking at is how, how we are using our existing resources and determining what else we need to do. Part of, you know, one of the things that our principals have identified is the need for instruction and teaching, like through providing assembly programs where the focus isn't on don't do, but on doing things that are seeing things and hearing things that are positive, positive school experiences and what those things look like. So of course, that's a big piece of it, and we're looking at how we're going to be able to do that. And we started doing some of that in the second half, and we look to continue that because we're seeing some positive things happening. Another huge resource is being able to have mentors. Both middle schools are looking at how they can pair up students, especially students who are in like those top tier, tier two, tier three, who are exhibiting those behaviors, who have a pattern, how we can pair them with individuals, sometimes peers, and sometimes some of our adults, and address, help them to, you know, change, see the need to change that behavior. So, you know, we, we're looking at how we're using resources, and that may determine at some point that we might need to get something else. But at this point, we believe we have, it's just readjusting some of, and repurposing some of the, the staff to address the, the needs that we're seeing. But great question.
Thank you.
Lori?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Wilson, are the majority of the suspensions in-school suspensions so that they're not missing instructional time, or are these out-of-school suspensions?
So that's a great question too. Unfortunately, a majority of them are out-of-school suspensions. But we're looking at how we might be able to do it because we also recognize that when students are not in school, they are missing instruction, and that puts them behind the eight ball in terms of keeping peace with their peers.
Thank you very much.
Bill?
Just off of that, you might wanna mention that we review all this every time we have security. Maybe you could explain that a little bit.
Sure. We're looking, we're looking at this data, building principals look at this and vice principals every month. So we're breaking down that data, looking at how we might be able to, you know, address some areas and identify areas where we might need to put additional resources. The Board of Education's Safety Committee also reviews this data on a monthly basis to see what kinds of things that they might be able to recommend and also to be able to support and show their support to our principals and our schools in redressing these types of behaviors.
Thank you. I just want to make a statement as well that thank you for the hard work in putting the report together. I know I am part of the safety committee every other month that we meet, and we have review, and we ask all the questions. And, you know, thank you for a commendable job. So now I will ask for a motion to open for public comment only on the student safety data report, three minutes per speaker. Moved by Nancy, seconded by Walter, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public, three minutes only per speaker are now open.
Seeing no comment, I move to close the public session on this item.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry. While I was waiting for that, I just wanted to recognize Sharon McNeil, who is our district PBIS coordinator. She works very diligently. She works very diligently to help not only continue to train staff and work with those, the PBIS teams at each of our schools, but to help them understand the data. And I have worked with individual staff and our principals in addressing that behavior. So Sharon, thank you.
Okay. Move to close the public session on this item.
Motion to close public comment by Bill?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lori. All in favor? Okay, public comment section is now closed. Can I get a motion to move A1 Student Safety Data Report?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Hopkins. Seconded by Bill. Can we have roll call, Brian?
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Inosensio? Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. LaCorte?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Missen?
Thank you. And I'll quickly turn it over to Dr. Rovalli since there's no super tenance report on the agenda today.
Yeah, no formal report, only because we have taken a lot of your time. So but I did want to thank Mr. Wilson and his mighty team who put the report together. I want to thank our principals for diligently continuing to work to improve those numbers. I think, you know, we have the ability to see the second semester numbers. You don't yet because they have to be certified by the state. And you'll see those in October, once we get them back from the state. But I think we're going to be happy when we compare what we saw in Report Period 1 to what we were able to do in Report Period 2. And it's due to a lot of the hard work of our PBSIS, Mr. Wilson, and especially our building-level administrators and teachers and all folks working together. As Dr. Hopkins said, I think we've turned the corner. We're working back towards what normal schools should be like. And we're excited about that. So thanks, Mr. Wilson. I also wanted to take at least 30 seconds to give Mrs. Mary Clark a round of applause. So these are wonderful events. We've celebrated a lot over the last couple of weeks. We had a special board meeting not too long ago, got all the days run together. I can't remember if it was this Monday or last Monday. I think it was last Monday. It was wonderful, got to acknowledge a lot of students. And Mrs. Clark and her team put all that together. We had a special breakfast for our Educators of the Year, recognizing all of our Teachers of the Year and our Paris and other certificated staff that work in support roles, thanking them for the wonderful job that they do. Wonderful breakfast, all put together by Mrs. Clark. And our board members were there. And our Teachers of the Year and their spouses and guests were there. Great event, again, thanks to Mrs. Clark. And this does, this is not easy to put together. I mean, you see the number of names listed on the agenda. That requires invitations, phone calls, constantly following up. Getting the cake's no easy feat. I know it wouldn't be for me, right? Coffee, you name it, she thinks of it. And Mary just wanted to say we appreciate it. And we appreciate all that you do to make sure folks get the recognition that they deserve. But you also deserve some of that recognition. So thank you. And that's it for me. Oh, one more thing. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure because Mary told me to, and I don't want to mess this up. Graduation, we did push FHS, so high school graduation, which is typically at 3:00. Due to the weather, and that usually is the heat of the day, we've, we're going to start as late as possible, which is 6:00 p.m. So I just wanted to make a public announcement. I know you've all been notified if you're in the high school. But I wanted to announce publicly that we are delaying the start of graduation, the start time of graduation. So graduation for the high school will still happen on Thursday. And instead of 3:00, it will begin at 6:00. The students will begin the procession at 5:30. So your students have been told 5:30. And that's because we're going to start walking them out at 5:30 so that Dr. Solomon begins right at 6:00 because of course, we've got Project Graduation to think about as well. So we want to get it all in. But hopefully, the sun will be going down. It'll be a little bit cooler, maybe tolerable. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. So I have a short Board President's report, and I'll try to read it fast. Few things. Our student families have recently been made aware of the Help Me app, which they can download on their phone. This app offers a 24/7 support system for students, families, and district employees. The app empowers every member of our district community to seek support whenever they need it, while remaining completely anonymous. The app provides a crisis text line with access to trained crisis counselors and the ability to access essential needs and wellness resources. And the best news, as many of you have heard, our own Malia Joy Moon, FHS Class of 2020 has won the Tony Award for Best Lead Actress in a Musical. Malia made her Broadway debut in Health's Kitchen earlier this year. We are all so proud of her. I want to pitch in here. My oldest son was also Class of 2020, and he was with her in Wizard of Oz. So when I heard the news, I actually did go. I have the poster hanging in my basement, all the plays that he's participated with her. And I was like, I kept looking at her. And I'm like, wow, she's come a long way. So I really felt proud. One last recognition of this year's fine visual and performing arts students who missed the cutoff for our special board meeting last week. Earlier this month, our middle school students competed in their annual Music in the Parks Festival. All four groups, jazz band, wind ensemble, competition choir, and competition orchestra received a superior rating, the highest possible rating, and finished in first place in their respective divisions. Additionally, the wind ensemble and competition orchestra placed first among all bands and orchestras competing in the festival regardless of their division. Finally, Samson G. Smith student Aviola Fabiweza received the Outstanding Soloist Award for his solos in the jazz band performance. We are very proud of our student performers. We are also proud of the 61 graduates who will be recognized with the New Jersey Seal of Bilinguality Certificate for their language proficiency in English and another language. This year, these languages include Italian, Turkish, Japanese, Hindi, Latin, and Spanish. And finally, I look forward to cheering these graduates and their classmates at graduation this Thursday. That ends my Board President's report. And now, I would like to again ask for a motion for comments from the public, five minutes per speaker, agenda items only. Moved by Nancy. Seconded by Lori. All in favor? Comments from the public is open. Five minutes per speaker, agenda items only.
Seeing no comments, I move to close the public session.
Okay, motion to close by Bill? Seconded by Dr. Hopkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comments from the public are now open. And since this is our last meeting of the summer, I will request that we will table committee and liaison reports. They're all on the website, so please spend some time and read those. And we will quickly move on to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to move R1 monthly reports, M1 minutes of board meetings, A2 travel and related expense reimbursement, A3 affirm harassment, intimidation, and bullying decisions, A4 donations, which includes a $750 donation from Mr. William Freiberg to be used by FHS Dance as a Broadway star sponsor, and a donation of $2,000 from Sustainable Jersey for the purpose of grant-specific items, A5 NJ SIA membership, A6 shared services agreement, A7 revised policies, a second reading, A8 revised policies adoption, A9 revised policies first reading, A10 facilities use, A11 memorandum of agreement, Bright Smiles Bright Futures Program, A12 adult education MOU with Hunter County Ed Services, B1 warrants of payrolls, B2 financial reports, B3 contract approval, A through Z. So you got it all. B4 change orders, none at this time, B6 FY2025 payment of claims, B6 transfer excess revenue or unexpended appropriations, B7 vendors exceeding bid threshold, B8 authorization to award contracts, B9 procurement of goods and services through state agency cooperative purchasing programs, A10 agencies for purchasing, A11? Oh, sorry, B10 agencies for purchasing. It's right in front of me, too. B11 adoption of the 2025 amended school budget. B12 2025, 2425 bid contract renewals, B13 receipt of bids, student transportation services, A14 award of bids, student transportation services, B15 receipt of bids, school-based health clinic, B16 pre-K toilet room compliance with waiver application, C1 out-of-district students for school year 2023, 24, and 2425, C2 field trip destinations, there's none at this time, C3 field trip applications, C4 Prokets Grant, C5 LIEP three-year program plan, C6 additional summer offerings and programs, C7 summer AP chemistry program for option two students, C8 2024, 25 bilingual program waiver, C9 NJ DOE expanding access to computer science grant, C10 NJ DOE Teacher Climate and Culture Innovation Grant, P2 increment withholding, and P3 Personnel Report dated June 18, 2024. So that's R1, A2 to A12, B1 to B16, C1 to C10, and P2 to P3.
Once again, motions on the table for R1, M1, A2 to A12, B1 to B16, C1 to C10, P2 and P3. Can I get a second? Seconded by Bill. Brian, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Inosensio?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. LaCorte?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Missen?
Thank you. Now can I get a motion to move P1 FDEA successor agreement?
Make a motion to move P1?
Motion to move P1 by Walter. Seconded by Nancy. Brian, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Inosensio?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. LaCorte?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Missen?
Yes, and I would like to congratulate our FDEA for doing a phenomenal job, and the Personnel Committee. We have now a memorandum of agreement for terms of a successor agreement between the Board of Education and the Franklin Township Education Association for the school years 24, 2024, 2025 through 2028, 2029, as previously reviewed by the Board of Education in closed session. I didn't say that. Okay. And now we're on to comments from the public, five minutes per speaker, any topic. Can I get a motion? Moved by Nancy. Seconded by Lori. All in favor? Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. I'm Dan Mayer. I am the president of Franklin Township Education Association. Stand here tonight wrapping up my 21st year as an employee of Franklin Township Public Schools. This is where I started, and this is where I plan to end it. Many things have changed over those years, both in our district and in the world of education. Some good, fortunately, some bad. But without reservation, I say that what we accomplished here tonight will have positive ramifications for our students and this district for years to come. I want to thank all the members of the Personnel Committee for their time and dedication over the past several months. And of course, thank all the board members for sharing in a common vision and goal with the FDEA. Reaching this point in time, negotiation's process is never guaranteed. But through our mutual commitment and dedication, we have helped secure the best possible future for our students and for this district. I am proud to be a part of this and thankful for everyone who helped in common supervision.
Nick DiMegglio, again. So I want to thank on behalf of the Franklin Township Parent Organization Presidents Council, Dan Mayer and the FDEA for their support for another year for the PTO, PTSO organizations. They contribute to the Teacher Appreciation Week by donating to each school building so that we can expand on what we do for the teachers. So we thank you for doing that for, I think it's our second year. But thank you very much to you and the FDEA.
Anyone else?
Seeing no more, move to close the public session.
So seconded.
Brian, you got that? All in favor? Okay, and we're now on to the good of the order. And I'll go from my right. Ms. Inosensio?
First of all, I will say, can you guys hear me? Okay. Just again, a huge thank you to our retirees tonight. Just enough can't be said for just the talent and dedication of the teachers in this district. I continue to be impressed on a regular basis. My daughter's pre-K teacher is retiring and was here this evening. And, you know, I'm trying to hold back my tears, another one that we will just miss dearly. But again, we just wanted to express my gratitude to the many years of service combined of all of these professionals. And we've already congratulated Malia Joy Moon, but that was just an exciting thing to see. My daughters, I let them stay up so they could watch it. And it was worth it. So just really proud of her. And that's just, again, another shining example of the talent coming out of Franklin Township. So just a lot to be proud of. Want to wish everyone a happy Juneteenth tomorrow. And just excited for graduation. Excited to see our high school graduates. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Seconding those comments, one of the things that, and it's actually personal to me, is actually all the work that we don't see that our instructors do. And it is truly a blessing. You guys are doing God's work, and we really appreciate that. Developing our children, creating memories that will last a lifetime. Without struggle, there is no progress. So thank you so much. Really appreciate everything that you do on a day-to-day basis. You take it home, you take it with your families, and you come back and you give us the best that you have. So we appreciate that tremendously. Happy Juneteenth as well. It is a pleasure and a tremendous privilege, I think, to be in a township that is so diverse and that appreciates everything that everyone has to offer. And as I travel around the state of New Jersey, I don't get to see that often everywhere. And so I want to make sure that we appreciate it and that we pat ourselves on the back a little bit to let each other know how grateful and gracious that we are. So thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
I want to say thank you to all of our staff, our teachers, and the support staff that have educated our students. that have educated our students this past year and made fabulous memories for them. Also want to thank our retirees and wish every a very happy and safe summer break. Rest up and be ready for next fall. Be well, thank you.
Bill?
So I think Nancy and Walter are going to like this. What happened with Malia to the world was major. What happened for Franklin Township was spectacular. FTEA, you're here tonight with the greatest award on Broadway. She thanks the Franklin teachers. I mean, this is major. This is like one of our high school baseball players gets drafted by the Yankees and hits the final home one in the home series. We'd have a parade. You know where I'm going with this. We must, Madam President, and that's why I say Nancy, because Nancy, I know, will jump right on this. And Walter was there when I worked with his wife when the Lady Warriors, and we celebrated them and moved the whole district. We took the team to every school. This can be done. A celebration and a recognition can be done jointly with council. I was sitting next to the mayor tonight. I didn't open my big mouth because I figured I should do it at the board first. But with the council, the Board of Education, FTEA, Chamber of Commerce, because this affects business. To have this kind of a school system affects business. This is no joke. This is a young girl that is on her first show and moves the country. Millions of people watched that. And she said, "Thank you, Franklin. Thank you, my teachers." This is, I mean, I'm moved by this. So I don't know where we go with this proposal, but I'd like Madam President to think about it, to maybe form a task force with Nancy, myself, and Walter, or whoever you want, and speak to the council. And we can find a way where Malia might have a few hours in September, because you'd have to have the students here to have a speaker to the auditorium. You have to have a joint meeting with the council for a joint resolution. And like we did with Famous Amos in 1983, I brought him in by helicopter to promote reading at the library, and at night, we had the proclamation at a dinner. Like a Person of the Year, you know, Malia Joy Moon Day. It's significant that our music program for decades that I've been here has been stellar. And now to achieve this does not happen in every district. Name me a high school that has a kid who won a Tony Award. This isn't the Paper Mill Playhouse Award, I mean, which is great. This is the Tony Award. And it's our student taught by your teachers, guys. Tim Walton, my dear friend who I hired, Terry Seggio. We need to move on this. Thank you. I know I've always had a board of Madam President, but I hope you consider what I'm saying. And I hope you talk to Nancy about it, because I didn't even talk to Nancy, but she agrees 100%. And Walter, Walter's wife was in tears when we celebrated those girls. If you could get Malia Moon to stand on a high school stage now to 2,000 to 1,200 students and inspire them, this is what we have to do. Those teachers brought her to the threshold that she's at. So I don't have a press release for this, but it just comes from the heart. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hopkins?
Wow, that's a tough act to follow. Just to echo Bill's spirit behind this and like why the coals are hot, to, she showed her love to Franklin, and Franklin needs to show their love back to her. And let the young ones aspire. Why not them? If she could do it, why not me? But I would like to recognize and look forward to tomorrow with Juneteenth, special day of my ancestors of being announced that slavery is over. So big ups for tomorrow. And with all the committees, with the teachers, with the PTSOs, it shows that it takes a village. Piggybacking what Bill is saying, that Thursday is graduation of our senior class, and we close another chapter. But the only way we could close this chapter is with our village pulling together and feeding the jewels and the full of nurturing our young ones to progress to graduation. And of course, it's always a milestone for me to see our classes go through, because it's a milestone to what the teachers have put into, the staff, the, everybody who is nurturing our kids. And I would be proud to shake the hands of the class of '24 and close that chapter, and then it's time for '25 to step up. But yeah, Bill, you're a hard act to follow.
Thank you. Walter?
Congratulations again to all the retirees, all the Franklin absolutely amazing teachers and staff, and security staff and support staff that we have in Franklin. Franklin is very, 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 very special. I had the opportunity with, excuse me, Ms. Delacero, I think it was June 9. She took about 80 Franklinites to see Hell's Kitchen on Broadway, and after the show was over, Malia came. And just the way that she embraced some of her old teachers and some of the students that she actually was in plays with back in the day, she was just so humble to be on this stage, but to still remember where she came from was very important. And as you guys all witnessed, she let the world know where she came from. Franklin strong. She was very proud of where she came from. Yesterday, I had the privilege to accompany Ms. Delacero and the Dance Company. They participated. They were at the New Amsterdam Theater on Broadway. They performed for Arts for Autism. And they were phenomenal. I'm not just saying this because, you know, they were Franklin though. They, to actually, I mean, there were schools from Texas and North Carolina, but to actually see these other schools say, "No, you guys were the best Franklin. You guys were the best," like you were, and just to compliment them. And of course, I think they had rehearsal earlier that day. So of course, all the Franklinites let everybody know about Malia, so that just took their stock to a whole nother level at that point. But when the show was over, just to see them go off on the bus, and as you all know, we are one of the most diverse districts, but to see these other schools who don't look like us, but to wave us off as if we were celebs, like they were chasing the bus down, like, "Oh, my God, what's your Instagram?" Like, "Franklin!" Like, it was just, it was so, it was so cool. The energy was so high. So I am absolutely proud to be a Franklinite to have raised my three daughters in Franklin and to have some absolutely amazing teachers that they will never forget, because that's what it's about, you guys. Do what you do. I know that you have your days, you have your moments, but you stick in there and you make an impact, and you change lives. And the lives that you change, change lives, and those lives change lives. So I just want to kudos to all the teachers and everybody who's a part of something in Franklin, because we all are part of this. Thursday is graduation. It's going to be a hot one, but hopefully by 6 o'clock, things will cool down. So congratulations to all those who made it, who will be graduating on Thursday. Be safe this summer. Stay out of trouble this summer. Be positive and do something positive. And while you're at it, have a few racks. Tiana got me hip to doing racks a few years ago. Random act of kindness. And I think this summer, if we all could take an opportunity to do a few racks, we will once again make this world a better place. Thank you.
And the tents are going to be air-conditioned, Dr. Revolino told me.
Moving on to Nancy.
Okay. So to all of our retirees, congratulations. Throw away your alarm clocks and just enjoy your next chapter in your lives, because it's pretty good. To all of our school-sponsored organizations, it really does take a village. I appreciate that more and more and more every single year, how everybody comes together, how there's friendships to be made, connections that could go on for, in your case, Nick, forever. Thank you to all of our, everyone that works in Franklin. That's part of the village. And to them, it's not a 9 to 5 or a 7 to 2:37, right? Or 7:30? I can't even tell you what time school starts because I don't have an alarm clock, because I'm retired. But it's not, you know, just in the confines of their contract. Their days continue long after. It takes a special person to be an educator. And I really appreciate that. And I've, so thank you guys for a phenomenal contract and a phenomenal collaboration that we all have together. And it's not just FTEA, it's FTSAA and FTASA? Oh, I got it, I got it. And all of our non-aligned. It's everybody coming together and working cohesively. And we're really fortunate. So to your point, Walter, we're really fortunate to be able to provide our kids a lot of opportunities. And because I always ask kids, or I ask people, "What's the best thing about Franklin?" Everybody says diversity, so it's like, what's the second best thing? And it's the opportunities. And it gives them a chance to soar. And so many of our kids soar. So to the class of 2024, we gave you the tools. Now let it be your best year. And Kalia Johnson will be performing on Broadway as Judith and Juliette. So check that out. Congratulations to her. And I had the pleasure of a watch party with PJ Parker and Terry Seggio, Charlotte Strand, and Tim Walton, who had the most beautiful ugly cry I have ever seen, right? And it was those people. It's not just those people. But I mean, Malia said it. It's thank you to my teachers. Thank you to the people that helped me find my talents. And that's basically what you guys are doing, is you're pulling out the talent that you don't even know that you have. So I really appreciate that. And Franklin definitely does have a kaleidoscope of talent. Alicia Keys reference. And so nights like this, they belong in the Guinness. Nights like this, never want them to finish. Don't wait for the end, let's start a beginning. Better to be alive than just to be living. It's like, I listen to that song over and over and over again. I wasn't going to sing it. No, because I, no, this will clear out in two seconds. But Malia does a much better job at it, and, but it's a good message. So with that, thank you. And thank you for closing out the school year. And I'm done.
Thank you, Nancy. So in closing, you can see, you know, this team here, there are, everything that each one said, I can say ditto. I don't have to repeat everything, but I want to thank all the retirees. I want to thank all these school-connected organizations. I was a PTO mom, like some of you sitting here, and now I'm here behind this desk. It's a journey, and it's a beautiful volunteer journey. And this is the reward that we get. We don't get paid in cash or check that comes to our bank, but this is the reward. It's seeing these teachers that have been part of our children's lives. It's seeing the children that make friendships and seeing Malia, you know, one of my son's friends who is on Broadway now. It's these little things that become big things, and that's the reward we get. Some of the teachers, some of the students will be working during the summer. They don't get a break. Our administration will be working during the summer. So happy breaks to those who will be able to get a break and think of those people who will still be working during the summer, wishing everyone well. But I want to give a shout out to Ryan from NJEA. I have met only two people from NJEA during my time in the education world. One, I'm sure, Ryan, you know her, Deborah Cornaveza. I can't pronounce her last name. She's your Director of Government Relations. She sent me a handwritten, beautiful note when we sat together and had dinner a few months ago. There is like a scary thing that if NJEA becomes part of negotiations, it's, you know, scary and hard. Such a wonderful person that I met, and we had real good conversations. So I want to shout, give you a shout out. Thank you so much for making it such a phenomenal process that we're here today. Brian, sorry if you had some moments of anger and discussions, but you know, I really wanted to call out Ryan. I think this is the relationship we have as a board with our teachers that even though we have disagreements, we come together and we come together as family, as friends. That's what makes us Franklin strong. So let's keep that relationship. Let's keep that positivity in our town and stay Franklin strong. And meetings adjourned.